I'd like to call this meeting of the Clay County Commission to Order. We will start with the pledge. If everyone would join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Nolte.
Here.
Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Here.
That brings us to approval of the agenda. Is there a motion related to approval of this evening's agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of this evening's agenda. Is there any discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson.
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter.
Yes.
With that, we come to public comments. Are there any members of the public present who would like to make any comments at this time? Seeing none. That brings us to our immediate action agenda, part of the agenda. Administrator?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. There are seven items on immediate action. The first item is approval of the Wednesday, September 29, 6:00 PM, Commission meeting minutes. Resolution 2022-398 is approving invoice payments for Clay County from November 11 through November 23. There are 406 invoices in the amount of $3,590,591.39. Resolution 2022-396 is to approve a cooperative agreement between Clay County and the Village of Oakview for plan review and inspection services. Ordinance 2022-41, which is the approval of, reappropriation and revise the 2022 budget in the amount of $95,374, again moving from one line item to another to address fuel purchase and vehicle repairs for the sheriff's office. Ordinance 2022-42 is reappropriate and revise the adopted budget in the sheriff's office community engagement fund. This is moving money in a line item on the amount of $7,100 from a donation to move into law enforcement supplies for the Shop with a Sheriff event this year. Resolution 2022-400 is the transfer within a fund. This is in the Health Benefits Fund. This is moving $200,000 from claims paid line item to the administrative fees line item. Resolution 2022-401 is approving and accepting a letter of credit for a two-year developer maintenance agreement for Eagleview Development.
Thank you very much. And that also, I believe you included the minutes on that, on that list?
Correct, I did.
I thought so. Very good. This is a little bit of a new procedure, so I will be looking in a moment for a motion to accept the immediate action agenda. If there are any issues on there the commissioners would like to discuss, certainly we can do that. If a commissioner would care to take one of these items off of this and consider it as a separate item as opposed to voting for the bundle, that is certainly, that would certainly be in order to make that request, and we would honor that. So with that, is there a motion related to our immediate action agenda?
Commissioner, I move that we approve the immediate action agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the acceptance of the immediate action agenda. Discussion? Seeing none. Is there any comment from the public? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Is there a motion related to this evening's consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed.
Motion has been made for the approval of the consent agenda as printed. Discussion? Seeing none. Any comment from the public? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to this evening's regular agenda. First item on that agenda is 2022-399. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-399 is approving invoice payments for the Clay County Prosecutor's Office. There is one invoice in the amount of $2,277.72. Staff would recommend immediate approval on this this evening.
Very good. And we did hear these, of course, last week.
No, this is typical warrants, but instead of being up in immediate action, this is put under regular action so that it could be voted on separately.
Gotcha. Thank you. Is there, is there a motion related to 2022-392?
I move that we approve 2022-399. 399?
Motion has been made for the approval of 2022-392. Discussion?
Well, on 399, yeah.
I'm sorry, it's a, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I was, yes, it is 399. I got the wrong one. Thank you for the correction.
No problem.
Any further discussion on 2022-399? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
I'm going to recuse myself.
Commissioner Nolte?
Yes. That brings us to 2022-391. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-391 is approving project authorization for the Law Enforcement Resource Center in the amount of $6,930,135. This is to utilize ARPA funding. There have been many presentations before the commission on this project, but certainly staff is here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there a motion on 2022-391?
I'll make a motion to approve 2022-391.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2022-391. Discussion? Seeing none? Any comment from the public? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-393. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-393 is consideration of approving a sole source vendor for the Police Facility Design Group for design and build of the Law Enforcement Resource Center. There were some questions about this at the last week's meeting, and one was brought up that procurement had not signed off on it, and they have. Also, there have been discussions with the county councillor, which I believe all his questions were addressed by the sheriff's department, and staff would recommend approval.
Very good. Is there a motion on 2022-393?
Commissioner, I move that we approve 2022-393.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2022-393. Discussion? While we're going through these, you know, with, with some expedience, I think this is something worth talking about for just a moment, and how important it is for us to be able to put this asset together. The sheriff's office has been considering this for some time, and it's important that I think we go forward with this. I think it will create an important asset for our community, and more specifically for the law enforcement community, you know, beyond our sheriff's department. So certainly, this is something that I think is, is a good expenditure of our money and a good investment in making sure that our, our sheriff's department has the training it needs. So with that, further discussion?
No, thank you.
Anything from the public? Seeing none. Commissioner, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-392. Excuse me. Administrator? The three? Yeah.
I believe we're on resolution 2022-382.
382, yeah. Thank you. Please go ahead.
This is a resolution approving ARPA funding and a capital project encumbrance request for the Riprap Project at Cat Branch and Sailboat Cove at Smithville Lake with I Decker Incorporated. This was presented during the ARPA project discussion and also last week by staff. We're requesting an amount not to exceed $50,000 for this particular project, and staff's available to answer any questions.
Is there a motion related to 2022-382? Excuse me. I'm having trouble with my numbers this evening. I apologize.
I'll make a motion to approve 2022-382.
Motion has been made for the approval of 2022-382. Discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-388. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-388 is approving project authorization for CXT restroom replacement and fee booth replacement in the Parks Department. This again is requesting ARPA funding for this. It will come back before the commission as we move forward with contracts. These projects were discussed during the project, ARPA projects, and we're certainly here to answer any questions you may have.
Very well. Is there a motion related to 2022-388?
I move that we approve 2022-388.
Motion has been made for approval of 2022-388. Discussion?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-389. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-389 is approving ARPA funding and a capital project encumbrance for Stormwater Infrastructure Project at Branch of Holmes Creek at Northeast 112th Street. This is an amount not to exceed $36,600 for design of the project.
Is there a motion related to 2022-389?
I'll make a motion to approve 2022-389.
Motion has been made for approval of 2022-389. Discussion?
No discussion.
Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That brings us to 2022-390. Administrator?
Resolution 2022-390 is approving ARPA funding and a capital project encumbrance for Stormwater Infrastructure Project at Fishing River at Nation Road. The amount is not to exceed $245,300, and this is for engineering of the project.
Is there a motion related to 2022-390?
Commissioner, I move that we approve 2022-390.
Motion has been made for approval of 2022-390. Discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
And that brings us to the final item under our regular agenda, 2022 Ordinance 40. Administrator?
2022 Ordinance 40 is approval of an ordinance establishing Chapter 35 of Title III of the Clay County Code of Ordinances, appropriation order for the annual budget of Clay County, Missouri pursuant to Section 50.525 through 50.651 of the Revised Missouri Statutes of Missouri. There was a presentation by staff last week on this particular ordinance, and we're certainly available to answer any questions you may have.
Is there a motion related to 2022 Ordinance 40?
I'll make a motion to approve 2022 Ordinance 40.
Is, is there a discussion? Seeing none, you are recognized, I'm sorry, did you want to present? Very good. You are recognized to close.
I close.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes.
That concludes our regular agenda. That brings us to our discussion items. We have one issue under discussion. That would be the general overview discussion of the proposed 2023 general fund budget, and that will be given by our administrator. Please proceed.
Thank you, commissioners. I feel very honored to be the first person to present from the new podium this evening here in our redesigned chambers, so I'm very happy to be here and talk to you about the 2023 proposed budget. Last week, well, it wasn't last week, I guess it's been two weeks since we had a meeting, the 2023 proposed budget was introduced to the commission. It's out on the website for the public to view, and we did an overview presentation of the countywide budget. What we plan to do going forward from tonight for the rest of the year is every meeting we will do a workshop on some of our operating funds and do a deeper dive into the revenues, expenditures, and the proposed additions in those particular funds for those budgets. But sort of want to get started tonight, about, see. Our, all our technology is not quite there yet. But before we get really started, I wanted to kind of give an overview of what's happened to how did we get here, because the budget process actually started many, many months ago. Started late in the summer with the commissioners having a meeting and a retreat and deciding and giving us as staff your priorities of what you wanted to be considered into the 2023 budget. At that same time, staff was busy looking at the economic conditions that we were facing and also trying to do financial forecasting and assumptions to prepare for revenues for 2023. Then at that same time, we called upon the department directors, our office holders, and their staff, and they began preparing their base budgets along with their budget addition requests and their capital requests. Staff also looked at our fee schedule and did updates to the fee schedules and presented those to the commission, which you approved the fee structure at your October 26 meeting. Then we began really digging in and preparing the proposed 2023 budget. We had numerous meetings with department heads and also office holders. Certainly, some took a couple of meetings, a lot of collaboration to prepare the proposed 2023 budget that's before you. We did post the budget per state statute on November 15. We did a presentation to the commission on November 16, was the overview of the entire county budget. And as I said earlier, our plan is to do workshops from now until the end of the year on our major operating funds. And then the budget approval, along with the publication, will happen in January of 2023. So, see, it does work. So just a highlight of what tonight's workshop is about, and we'll take a look again at some of our key considerations and your priorities. We'll take a look at some of the economic indicators that had an impact on our budgeting. Along with tonight is about the general fund, which is one of the largest funds within the county structure. We'll look at revenues and expenditure trends. We'll look at budget highlights and additions, and then we'll revisit again the budget calendar and what's on the horizon for the remaining of our workshops. So again, just to remind everyone what the commission's priorities were. One was to update the comprehensive plan. You requested that we increase funding in roads and bridges. You wanted to implement market adjustments, COLA adjustments, and compression issues to retain and attract employees, and you wanted us to look at increasing funding for facility maintenance. So some of our economic indicators that are important that we look at, and then one is looking at unemployment. So as of September, Clay County's unemployment is 1.8%. The U.S. unemployment rate in, for September is 3.5%. Economists look at if unemployment is between 4 and 5%, you have full employment. So we're sitting here at 1.8%, which is no surprise when you go anywhere and everywhere, depending on, you know, whatever the, the work is, there is work, you know, job needed looking for employees. It is becoming a challenge for, across not only our organization, for all the positions that we have, but certainly other agencies, the private sector. It is a challenge with very low unemployment rate. Last year, Clay County's unemployment rate was 5.1%, so substantially less, which is good that we have people employed, but when you're trying to recruit and fill vacant positions, it does create a challenge. We also know that consumer confidence is down. It's the lowest that it's been since the 1960s. However, looking at the reports from the kickoff of the holiday season and the holiday shopping, sales were up compared to last year at 10% was one of the reports that I saw. Some concern that a lot of that transaction has been on credit cards, and we know interest rates are raising on credit cards. So while there is shopping going on, there is still concern by consumers. And while they may be doing the Christmas shopping, you know, their, their confidence in buying big-ticket items and saving, there is some concern on behalf of the consumer. And certainly last is inflation, and certainly we all feel that, our residents feel it, our businesses feel it, and certainly the county is seeing it in our budget. The inflation has gotten better. The high this year, and was in May, was about 8.6% in inflation. The October inflation rate right now is at 7.7%. So again, going in the right direction, but still pretty substantially high, that a year ago it was 6.2%. So it's still higher than it was a year ago. So all of those things we've taken into consideration as we look at the budget. We also look at, and I think it's important to look at, you know, the county's growth. And so, you know, this chart will show you that we really have had steady growth, this is assessed valuation, since 2012. And so we saw some, you know, larger increases in 2020, '21, and certainly '22. But we know with the housing market, we're seeing a little bit of slowdown in it, the interest rates are having an impact on that. Our average over this period of time, annual growth is about 5.3%. And so we believe that we're going to continue and have that steady growth that the county has experienced in the past, which is a positive aspect when we're looking at planning for the budget. So tonight, we're here to talk about the general fund. This is an organizational chart, and it's a little difficult for the audience to read, but this is the structure of the organization effective January of 2023 as a result of the final implementation of the constitution. There are, in 2023, there are 565 full-time county employees and 39 part-time employees. Tonight, we're here to talk specifically about the general fund. And so these charts, these boxes that are in orange represent departments or functions that have their base budgets in the general fund. That represents 202 of our full-time employees, or 37% of the county employees are in the general fund. So I'll steal a little talking about numbers tonight, since we're talking about the budget and the general fund. So this chart is to help provide some context of adopted budget comparison. So in 2021, the authorized general fund budget that was adopted was $35.3 million. In 2022, the adopted budget is $43.1 million. And the proposed 2023 authorized budget is $43.2 million. Now, there is some breakout on that. That's the authorized budget, but that is encompass the operating budget, which is $30.2 million. The amount that we have in reserves that we always show as rainy day money, and we actually show that as an expenditure, should it be needed to be used, is $3.8 million. And then we also have expenditures of transfers of $9.2 million out of the general fund into other operating funds to support their budgets. And so I think it's important to notice here that the one-year change for the proposed authorized budget in the general fund from '23 to '22 is less than a 1% change. It's 0.2% change in increase for funding for the, the general fund budget. So we talked a little bit about revenues and how we look at those and how the economy has an impact on that. So the pie chart on the left is the proposed operating revenue for the general fund. That's estimated to be $28.5 million. And you can see that the majority of that, 60% of our revenue for the general fund, comes from sales tax. So we are very cognizant of what's happening in the economy because that drives the revenue source that we have to operate the general fund. Property taxes, 5%. Fees, fines, licenses, and leases are 27%. And then we have grants at 8%, and we have miscellaneous, which is less than 1%. The chart on the right is those available funding sources that are utilized for the 2023 budget. And so there are two additional revenues that we've added to the pie chart. One is reserves in the amount of 25%, and then transfers, which are 3%. These are transfers coming into the general fund, which would constitute as revenue. We'll talk a little bit more about that, but we have TIFs throughout the county, and so when we receive sales tax, our standard operating procedure is to take 10% of the sales tax and move it into the TIF fund and then pay to the developers based on the TIF agreements, those funds. Over a period of time, when the 10%, it can accumulate to having a fund balance. And so we analyze that fund balance, and when it becomes excessive, and more than what we think we need, then we will transfer the excess fund balance of the TIF fund back into the funds where the original source came from. So as we go through the budget process, you will see transfer in from the TIF fund to the general fund, to the law enforcement fund, and also to our capital use tax funds. So, but again, even though that sort of redistributed the pie chart, sales tax is still the largest revenue stream for the general fund. So we'll kind of want to take a little bit of a deeper dive into, to sales tax. So this chart here is to talk about the general sales tax. We have two general sales tax that total three-quarters of 1%. We are estimating in 2023 that that will bring in $33 million. And so you can see here historically what the actual has been in 2019, in 2020, in 2021, and then our estimated sales tax collections that we believe that we will collect in 2022, this fiscal year. So it kind of helps put into context the growth of our sales tax. We're projecting a 6% growth in 2023 in sales tax overall. But in addition, what this chart also shows you is it breaks down in each column sort of what allocation the general sales tax goes to. And so you see that there are three different categories. So I'm going to start at the bottom of each column. It's kind of, depending on what you're looking at, the light blue amount. That is the amount of the general sales tax that actually stays within the general fund to operate the general fund. And in 2023, we're estimating that to be about $7.9 million. The second category in the column is the darker blue, which is the bigger section, and that is the amount of the general sales tax that is allocated directly to other funds to meet their operating needs. And so in 2023, that number is about $15.8 million out of the total $33 million in sales tax. Now, those funds that will represent and get those monies are the road and bridge, the law enforcement and the emergency communications funds, the park fund, also the TIF fund gets 10% of it off the top. And then the top of the column, the lighter blue, represents the transfers. And so in 2023, we're proposing transfers in the amount of $9.2 million. That'll be transferred out of the general fund from those sales tax to those operating funds as needed to basically balance their budgets. But I think what's important to look here, and as we have further discussions later on during the budget workshops, is looking at the trend. So if you compare 2019 with the amount of money that, sales tax that was stayed in the general fund to the amount of the sales tax that stays in the general fund in 2023, it is a reduction of 14%. What we're seeing is the sales tax going direct to other funds is increasing from 2019 to 2023 by 38%. And the amount that the general fund is transferring, that top color, is also increasing substantially to help sustain other operating budgets. Property tax is another revenue within the general fund. This chart shows you historically property tax for the mill levy for the general fund. So you can see actuals for 2019, 2020, '21, estimated for '22, and then what's proposed in '23. '23 reflects a reduction in the mill levy for the general fund. There's a rollback as a result of the increase in sales tax. And also, the commission elected to reduce the mill levy additionally to help property tax owners during these economic times with their tax burden. So this chart actually compares major revenue source and trends by our major categories. So you can see sales tax, what the actual is between 2019 and 2021 are estimated and are proposed in 2023. So as I said earlier, we're projecting a 6% growth in sales tax overall, but you can see there's actually a reduction in the general fund because those sales tax growths are actually going to help balance other funds. The property tax, we just talked about, is continuing to decline as a revenue source for the general fund. And then you see fees, fines, licenses, and leases. We estimate in 2023 that that'll have about, almost a 4% growth. I do want to draw attention to 2022 and 2021 and 2020 when it talks about fees and fines. So we saw a substantial amount of growth in fees, and primarily that was due to a lot of records in our recorder's office. So a lot of recording of property transactions, but the housing market, we saw a lot of house sales. And so that has slowed down a little bit, so we have reduced our projection for this year and next year, and thinking that it will get back to more of a normal trend based on what we're seeing with interest rates. And if you have any questions, please, it's a workshop, so ask me any questions. And if you have any questions, please, it's a workshop, so ask me any questions. This one, I know, is really, really hard. So we've talked about revenues, now we're going to talk about expenditures. And when I talk about the operating budget for the general fund, I talk about two things. It's the operating of the $30 million that I talked about on the couple of slides back, and also the transfer of the $9 million that we're doing to other funds. So when you think about the general fund and its operating budget, it's actually for 2023, $39.4 million. So this has a lot of information on it and small numbers, and I apologize for that. But within the general fund, we have 26 different departments or operations that have budgets within the general fund. And so what we've done here is giving you by department what their budget is, what percentage of the general fund operating budget it is. And we've started with the largest down to the smallest. So you see that the largest operating budget in the general fund is that transfer of $9.2 million, followed by juvenile services at $4.7 million, benefits and insurance for all the 202 employees that are in the general fund at $3.8 million, then the prosecutor's office at 3.7 facilities, and on the way down to debt service, which there is a small amount of funds that are transferred from the general fund to the debt service. So a couple of the items I want to bring to your attention. One of them would be, it's almost down towards the end of the page, it's called appropriations to outside agencies. So the county has historically provided funding to some of our outside agencies. There are seven agencies that have received funding from the county. The amount is $315,350. This is the Northland Healthcare Access Soil Conservation, the Northland EDC, the University of Missouri Extension, Children's Mercy, Northland Neighborhood, and Rebuild Together Kansas City. So all those agencies submitted to the budget team what they have done in the past with the funding that the county has given them and submitted proposals for funds for 2023. So that's included in here. The other one I want to bring up to your attention is called the Government Association Membership. And so if you're comparing this particular operation to last year, it has seen a large increase. Historically, what has been in this particular area of operation is simply the county's membership to Mid-America Regional Council. And as we started doing the budget and looking at our operating, not only in administration, but all the other departments and the office holders, we found that there was an overlap and a redundancy in memberships. And so specifically with chambers. So working with departments and working with office holders and with the chambers, we worked out so that the county would have a corporate membership. And so we're not duplicating costs and we're not duplicating services. And we've grouped all of those together in this particular one, operating budget. So of the $39.4 million, we've talked about what department operations and how that's broken out. But when it comes to what are the categories? And so the chart on the left will show you how are we spending and investing the dollars. 49% of the general fund budget is in personnel. 26% of it is in contractual. And 23% of it is the transfer that we're sending to other funds. The chart on the right provides you specific historical information about actuals for 2019, 2020, '21, our estimate for '22, and then also then our proposed for '23. So I want to talk a little bit about '23 compared to '21 because those numbers look a little different. If you look at personnel specifically, you can see that our estimate for 2022 is about $15.3 million. But the '23 proposed budget is actually $19.2. So there's a couple of reasons for that. First of all, we budget for every position, all 202 positions, as if it was staffed for the entire year with their wages and benefits. So the first thing I would say in '22 and '21, those actual numbers and estimates reflect all the vacancies that we have had in our positions. '23 proposed for personnel also includes the adjustment for merit and COLA and compression that we've also included. On contractual and commodities, a little bit, very much the same thing. It has increased compared to '22 for a couple of reasons. One has to do with inflation. We're feeling inflation in our cost of services and our contracts. Also, again, in 2022 and 2021, our actuals and our estimate is coming in under budget. Also, in our contractual and commodities, we've tried to increase for our facilities operations, which is part of the general fund. You'll see in capital. Capital for 2023 is $43,000. You'll see in 2022 is $1.8 million. Substantially different. In 2022, we did a project, we are doing a project at the airport with MODOT and doing the runway resurfacing. Now, that's 90% funded by MODOT grant. The general fund utilized some money to help with cash flow of that project, and it is a reimbursable grant. So when the project is completed and closed out and we submit for reimbursement, the general fund will be reimbursed for those funds. So that's why it looks a little odd going from $1.8 million to $43,000. And the last category is the transfers. And 2023 is 9.2. You'll see that 2022 is estimated to be about 7.3. And if you look across that line, you'll see transfers, again, are continuing to grow as the general fund transfers money to help other operating budgets be sustainable.
Excuse me.
Yes.
On those, do you see those trends as continuing? Or do you see those as kind of blips on the radar on some of these increases and decreases? Obviously, explain the one about under capital. But do you see those trends as a continuing trend? Or is it basically something that is situational?
No, I believe we are going to see continual trends. And not only personnel costs are always, you know, continuing to increase, but I think the trend, because those costs that we're experiencing in the general fund for personnel, commodities, and contractual, so are the other funds that the general fund has been supporting. And so, you know, the general fund will have to continue to increase the transfers, or those funds are going to have to find other revenue sources. And so when we get into our last workshop, which is about the five-year CIP and forecasting of the budget, we'll have some additional discussions about that. So yes, you know, I would say that in the future, the county will be faced with some challenges. So transfers are a big number. If you looked across that bottom line, that, you know, in 2019, there were 5 million, and we're now sitting at 9 million. So again, lots of numbers on the chart. And so for those of you that have that in front of you, I wanted to give you some historical and some context about, well, the general fund has been transferring. Where have we been transferring funds to? What are those different funds that we've been assisting with? And so while you'll see there's, you know, some one-offs because something came up in the particular year that needed some financial assistance, but we have some funds that certainly we continue to support. And so, you know, one is certainly law enforcement. So we transfer, and it's continuing to grow on what the general fund sends to the law enforcement on an as-needed basis. We're also sending funds to the emergency communication fund, which is our 911 system. And then also, we're sending, continuing, I think, and we're going to continue to see this, sending assistance to the reassessment fund, which is the assessor's office. So we've talked a little bit about, you know, just sort of, those are all kind of operating. And I will spend some time on some highlights and budget additions that are being proposed. They are all included in the numbers that I've just gone over with you. So we'll talk about our investments in juvenile services. And so in the general fund, we're proposing to add two full-time additional deputy juvenile officers to part-time additional deputy juvenile officers and also increase their additional part-time hours. Those funds will come from the general fund in the amount of $178,240. What this does do, does allow us to do is to meet standard operating procedures by state. We're also recommending, out of the capital fund, while we're here to talk about the general fund, we also have representatives from all the departments here tonight that if you have specific questions. So I wanted to talk about their capital projects while they're here. So we are recommending $15,200 to come out of the capital fund to do fiber upgrade to the juvenile facilities. This will enhance their connectivity and also increase their speed. We are recommending to install card readers and cameras at our group homes to enhance security at our juvenile group homes. This will come out of the capital fund in the amount of $62,000. Also, we need to do roof repairs at our group homes. These are 20-year-old roofs. We've had problems in the past. And so we're recommending utilizing capital funds in the amount of $70,000 to address the age of the roofs. In our prosecutor's office, we're recommending to add a victim advocate's position. This will come from the general fund. It's estimated to be about $82,500. Right now, the prosecutor has one victim advocate position. So when that individual's in court, when they're on vacation, when they're out sick, we have, we don't have the ability to provide victim assistance. And so the recommendation is to add a second position that will also allow us to maintain the Missouri Victim Rights statute provision by adding this additional position. We're recommending to upgrade the part-time criminal investigator in the prosecutor's office to full-time. They have one, 1.5 currently. By giving them two, again, it addresses the same issues that we have with the victim advocate. So it helps with staffing shortages. Also, by adding these additional positions, there are functions that the prosecutors themselves are doing that can be allocated to these new positions, which will then free up capacity of our prosecutors to deal with caseloads that they're seeing. We're also recommending to replace the criminal investigator vehicles in the prosecutor's office coming from capital in the amount of $78,000. We're also completing their office furnishing project from capital in the amount of $34,000. We're going to now move to facilities and what's being funded in facilities. Facilities has certainly a budget in the general fund that does some of their routine operating maintenance on facilities. But they also have funding capability out of the law enforcement fund and also out of the capital fund. So we're going to hear a few of the additions for proposed in 2023. The first one is doing ceiling replacements in the detention facility. There's two sources of funding to do this project, from the law enforcement fund and the capital fund in the amount of $65,000. We're also recommending to use $50,000 of capital fund to replace doors with pass-through doors that has paths-through window capability that enhances security for our staff and also for our guests in the detention facility. We are recommending to use $175,000 of capital for the Rooney Justice Center for security enhancements. There was a facility security report that was done. There were several recommendations that came out of that. And so we're recommending to allocate capital funds to implement some of those recommendations. We're also recommending $100,000 out of capital to replace the doors on the north side of this building. They're historic doors. They've not worked for several years. They're probably, I think, from the 1930s. We can't get parts for them. And so we believe for providing and enhancing emergency options that those doors should be replaced. From our IT department, we're recommending $210,000 from capital for the implementation of Microsoft 365. This will expand security features. As we all know, government agencies can certainly be at high risk for phishing. And it's just a risk that we take. And so we are constantly looking at ways that we can enhance our security. It also provides updates, you know, laterally to all our users, which will mean that everybody will be on the same version, utilizing the same software. Also, it helps with efficiency and license management, provides the opportunity to have more teams' meetings internally and externally. We're also recommending from capital $120,000 to replace switches, which are sort of the backbone of our network. We have some switches that are problematic, and they have beyond their life expectancy. In our court, we're recommending that we do audio upgrades. This would come from capital in the amount of $26,150. This would expand audio and video technology, not only in the courtrooms, but also in the jury rooms. We're finding more and more they're going to technology versus paper and handing things out, which is great. And certainly from COVID, you're not passing things around. But we need to enhance the technology in those rooms. We're also recommending in capital $142,985 to also do additional replacement and upgrades. This will allow video conferencing for our judges and also provide stabilized internet access in the courtrooms for the prosecutor's office. So they can go paperless. Right now, they have used wireless, and it has been sporadic and not very reliable. We're recommending out of the general fund $250,000 to upgrade the comprehensive plan. This is a guide for the future growth and development of the county. It helps us with long-term planning for infrastructure. It will incorporate all the master plans that we have and bring it all together with one vision. Also, it will update our current zoning changes that we've made. Also allows the opportunity to collaborate with the municipalities in the county so we can identify their growth areas and so that we work together as the county grows. We're recommending out of the general fund $30,000 to do a commission strategic planning session in the first part of 2023 with all seven new commissioners to get together to have a strategic planning session. What are the goals? What are the vision? What are the values? Not only short-term, but long-term goals. And also, including in the general fund is the adjustment for cost of living, marketing adjustments, and compression. We are, in the prosecutor's office, have implemented the restructuring that the prosecutor had requested. And then for all others in the general fund, we're allocating 8% for market adjustments and COLA and dealing with compression issues. And that's an overview for the general fund. Certainly happy to answer any questions. We have departments here in case you have something specific about something that you've seen in your detailed budget books that we've provided you, but we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the administrator or any staff?
No questions, thank you. As always, this is a refreshing take on moving in the right direction, and I enjoyed the presentation, but no questions today, thank you.
Mr. Cuffin.
I don't have any questions, but thank you. Like Commissioner Thompson said, you know, this has been very helpful. And, you know, I think we can be proud of the direction we're going in. Obviously, there's a lot more discussion to be had in the future sessions over the next several weeks and as we welcome the new commissioners on in early January. But I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
I think this is a good presentation. Certainly, this is an improvement on some of our past processes that we've gone through. So I think we are moving in the right direction as far as getting the information to commissioners. I think that becomes increasingly important as we expand our commission membership because it's just more difficult to communicate with seven rather than three people. So this is really a good tool for us to use as we go forward on this. I think we're going to have questions going forward, but this gives us a good basis to start from and a good overview as far as where we're going. And I also appreciate the historical context that the directions that some of these funds are going, especially obviously the general fund, which is what we're talking about this evening. So I think that's very helpful on where we are as a county. And you don't know where you're going until you know where you've been. So that was a, that was a good presentation with that, unless there are any further questions. Any comments that anyone else would like to make? I see none. Would you like any closing remarks, Administrator?
I do, thank you very much. First of all, because I have a captive audience and I have individuals here from various departments, again, I want to reiterate my appreciation for all the hard work that they and their staff did in, in working together and collaborating and putting together the proposed 2023 budget. Again, for whatever reason, I'm not working. So I don't know if I can get Mike to go to the next slide, thank you. But again, this is the budget calendar, and we're here on November 30th with the general fund overview. So next week, at the work session at 3:00, we will do work session number two on the budget, and we'll focus on the law enforcement fund. Then the 14th, Road and Bridge and Parks. And then December 21st, we'll do the five-year CIP and forecasting. And then December 21st, we'll do the five-year CIP and forecasting, again, getting into some of the discussion, I think, that Commissioner Nolte has raised. Again, January 4th, we hope to do a recap and overview of the budget with budget adoption, January 11th, along with the public hearing. And we certainly want to encourage individuals to be engaged in our budget process. This presentation will be out on the website tomorrow. Obviously, you can watch the video on YouTube. We also have comments on Facebook, and we're getting ready to start putting some information about the budget out on Facebook to get individuals aware of what's being proposed. And certainly, if anyone has any questions, they can certainly email the budget support team, and we have that address here on the website. So we hope to have feedback and engagement, so.
Could you, I mean, realize anybody watching probably is familiar with this, but could you give us the website location where these, this information can be found, just to kind of repeat this information for those who might be watching?
Absolutely. So the county's website is claycountymo.gov, and it's on the transparency portal. And so you can go there and find not only the detail of the budget book that the commissioners have received, so the full budget, but you can also find these presentations also on the website.
And I think we all are obviously grateful to staff and all the hard work they put forward in this presentation and the future ones that we will be looking at. And finally, I'd just like to say, I appreciate the fact that we have commissioners elect in attendance today. So I appreciate the fact that those who have been elected and will be joining this body are, are here getting as much information as possible. And certainly, that's going to make it all that much easier for us to go through the process in an efficient manner in January, when we have our full complement of seven. There's no further discussion? Very good. That brings us to County Administrator comments. So you're back on again.
Back on again. I just have one, and that is to talk about the next meeting of the commission will be a work session next Wednesday, December the 7th, at 3:00 p.m. here in the chambers.
Thank you. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Thompson?
No comments today. Thank you.
Mr. Comer?
No comments. Thanks.
I'd just like to say, I hope everybody had a pleasant and a fun Thanksgiving holiday. Certainly, we have much to be thankful for. And I think that is something that we can all feel good about, is the way we spend our holidays. That brings us to reports. I believe we have one report.
Yes, there is the annual report of cases filed by the prosecutor's office for 2021 was included in your packet.
Thank you. And the commissioners have any comments on that report? Have you all received them? So that's good. That brings us to recess and adjournment.